Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the November 19th, 2019 regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you wonder why some of us have a little hat head today, we had the pleasure of doing our groundbreaking ceremonies today for the new Hendrix Middle School this afternoon at 2:00, and then also this evening for the new academies of creative education and our Performing Arts Center that will be built out back. So that was a really great ceremony. We enjoyed it. The weather cooperated, and we hope that does so for the next year and a half while those schools are under construction. If you'd all stand for the pledge, please. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Agenda's good as is. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy, all in favor. That's unanimous. First up tonight is recognitions with Cindy Solom.
This is always the best part of the evening because we get to recognize our great employees. And in this one in particular, Karen Allen is, I know her, and so I want her to come up here and stand later. Everybody look at her while I read things about her. Don't turn to your red. There were lots of good things said about Karen. I don't know if you can say too many good things about Karen, but I want to hit a few of the highlights that sort of sum up what good work she does with us. She began work here in 1989, extensively working as a substitute teacher in the system. And then in 2007, she came to Teaching and Learning and hasn't looked back since. And I can tell you that Teaching and Learning depends on her greatly every day. Karen has a tremendous work ethic and is quick to serve others with a smile on her face. She is a quiet and humble staff member who leads by example and takes care of those around her with dedication and hard work. Karen's contributions to our department and school system go well beyond the walls of the REC, the Resource Assessment Center. Karen has worked to devise a very meticulous, and I can tell you it is meticulous, and effective plan for managing all of our textbook resources. She's probably the only one who knows all about them, actually. As they all in Teaching and Learning found out recently, because Karen had to be out for a little while, all of us depend on Karen's kind-hearted guidance and organization in order to make this process smooth. And I'd have to say, I think it took three people to replace you while you were gone for a few weeks. It was, it was kind of hilarious, actually, to watch them. Karen proactively problem solves when issues arise. Karen is an asset to Forsyth County schools. She truly is the glue that holds us together, and we appreciate her greatly. She has to balance all of our requests and needs and does so with the best attributes of servant leadership. Karen is an unsung hero. She is deserving of the title Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
All of you who are here to support her, please stand.
Jim and Nick's will have a gift for her, but they will be, it will be coming to her. They didn't get to come tonight, Karen, but they will get you your Jim and Nick's gift certificate. Oh, she's got it? Okay, great. Good. Thank you. Thank you all for supporting her. That's it. We'll do Superior Performance Spotlight tonight. The Superior Spotlight is Internship Forsyth and Mentorship Forsyth, and it is led by student Christian Ream. Christian?
Good evening, Dr. Bearden, Mrs. Abbott, and members of the Forsyth County Board of Education. My name is Christian Ream, and I'm an 11th grade student at the Alliance Academy for Innovation. I am here tonight to represent the over 1,000 students currently enrolled in career and technical education in the school district. I know you all have seen this before, but our high schools all have very diverse pathway options for students to complete three years in a sequence. These pathways represent the 17 career clusters offered by the Georgia Department of Education. While either enrolled or having completed a pathway, students are eligible to participate in the Internship Forsyth or Mentorship Forsyth program. Currently, there are over 500 student segments around the program, and I hope to be one of these students next year. Our district office, including CTA, including CTAE Director Dr. Valerie Lowe and our six amazing career development coordinators, worked with the Forsyth County Chamber of Commerce and the Pencil Foundation in Nashville to redesign their work around CTAE partnerships over the summer. In front of you, there are specific recruitment materials recently developed that help our administrators, teachers, and community understand the specific ways to get involved. Even down to the name and the design of this logo, our industry partners made a joint decision of steps to take our programs to the next level. This is one of the new guides, which we often use when recruiting partnerships. We feel this guide is an easy, is in an easy-to-read format, which showcases ways for partners to get involved, including advisory council participation, community mock interviews, classroom speaking, preparing us for our CTSO competitions, or hosting internship and mentorship The other guide in front of you is a shorter version that also shows information on the Workforce Forsyth 2.0 initiatives of the district, which involve marketing and outreach of CTAE, building and evaluating our soft skills program, building leadership capacity for all CTAE students, and growing CTAE partnerships. As you can see, these priorities fit into the FCS learner profile as well, particularly exhibit strong personal qualities and pursue continuous learning. This document also tells more about industry-certified programs and the type of industry-recognized credentials students earn upon completion of a pathway, and again focuses on the, on which areas a business might want to connect with us in. These partnership structures make programs like Internship Forsyth and Mentorship Forsyth possible due to the large numbers of students participating. Our partners provide opportunities for students to work up to 15 hours a week in either program. Internship Forsyth is a business and industry-work-based learning program that connects classroom learning to a real, on-the-job experience and can be paid or unpaid. This program helps students develop strong employability skills and determine if the anticipated career path is the right path. At this time, I'm going to ask Nolan McGinley and Kier Pienaar to share their experiences with Internship Forsyth.
Thanks, Christian. Joe.
Good evening. My name is Nolan McGinley, and I'm a senior at South Forsyth High School, and I'm participating in marketing pathway. Since May, I've served as a marketing for Automation Direct, which is located in Coming. One of Automation Direct's primary means of marketing is through the YouTube channel, which I've been given the responsibility to manage, which has nearly 25,000 subscribers and over 1,000 videos posted. I have personally posted over 75 of those. In addition to managing the YouTube channel, I assist with market research, analytics, respond to customer feedback, and assist in day-to-day maintenance of the YouTube channel. Working in Automation Direct has helped me learn what it's like to work at a world-class company. I've learned how to work with the latest digital marketing tools, which many students don't have the opportunity to even beyond college. Ultimately, this internship has confirmed my interest to pursue business and, to pursue business at Georgia State University in the coming year. I would like to thank the Work-based Learning Internship Program and Miss Moore for giving me this amazing opportunity. I would also thank my managers, Mr. Wheeler, for giving me this amazing experience. It is evident this opportunity has placed me far, far ahead of my students at my age, and it serves as a catalyst for my future success. Thank you.
Good job, Nolan.
What will they do without you? What does Automation Direct going to do without you? Are they going to try to get you to work?
Remotely.
Yeah, remotely.
They're just going to close shop, right?
Good evening, Forsyth County Board of Education. My name's Kier Pienaar. I'm currently a senior at Lambert High School, where I completed the Entrepreneurship Pathway. I would first like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'm currently an intern with Gerald Lofton Wealth Advisors, and I've been interning for about six months. As an intern for a wealth management firm, I've learned priceless information regarding the financial industry, financial planning, investments, and the role purpose plays in an individual's career. My instructor, James, a 20-year veteran in the industry, started this firm around 11 years ago with his partner, George Rawl Jr., a 30-year veteran in the industry. James and George have both served as my mentors and my teachers for the past six months and have trained me in ways I can add value to the firm. I've been taught in areas such as retirement planning, investment strategies, financial planning, client service relationships, and ethics of wealth management. Some of my many highlights of my experience so far are attending weekly BNI networking meetings where I presented in front of 20 other small business owners, witnessing firsthand the firm's transition into an independent registered investment advisory firm, and also assisting James conduct 12 separate retirement courses with over 40 hours of class time teaching adults on the basics of retirement. The firm has been extremely impressed with my level of commitment and performance so far and wants me to continue working for the firm throughout my college and after I finish my studies as an advisor. James believes studying for and taking the Series 66 and Series 7 exam is the best next step for my career. In March, in March of next year, I will turn 18, and I will sit for these exams. My college plans are to attend UNG, then UGA, where I will complete my bachelor's in financial planning, and then thereafter, complete the certification of a certified financial planner. My experience as an intern has truly changed my outlook on life and my future, and to figure out a career that I'm incredibly passionate about at such a young age is truly a blessing. Another amazing aspect of this experience is I have inspired and helped my peers seek internships as well. Again, I would like to extremely thank all of you for allowing me to speak in front of you today.
Great job. Thank you. Wow. Impressive.
He hasn't even gotten to 18, and he knows more about retirement than we do.
Yeah, well, it's good. Can you hang around after?
His planning.
Mentorship Forsyth is a bit more community-focused around job shadowing, where a student observes and learns about a specific career in an unpaid environment. This program includes a research capstone activity and allows students to explore careers outside of a pathway. It also involves students taking all advanced-level courses or completing a different pathway, such as a world language or fine arts one. At this time, I'm going to ask Heidi Merlow to share her experience with Mentorship Forsyth.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Merlow, and I'm a senior at Forsyth Central High School. I've been in the food and nutrition pathway, and I'm currently doing this mentorship program at SAFT, which stands for Supporting Adoption and Foster Families Together. So one of the main services they provide is supervised visitation for foster kids and their biological parents. So I've actually gotten to sit in and a lot of these visitations with my mentors, and they go through, they fill out documentation that then gets sent over to the court to decide what's in best interest for the child and where they should be placed. So they'll go through the documentation with me and say, you know, this is really important to include because this would affect where the child would be placed. This isn't really important to include because it's irrelevant, just for the court to know for the placement of the child. So along with shadowing these visitations, they've also, my mentors have given me a lot to do on my own. I do a lot of reception work, which has taught me so much, just communicating in the real world, because there's a big difference between in-person, over the phone, and email communication. So along with that, I'm the point of contact for all volunteers right now, which is crazy as a high schooler during the Christmas season, that all the volunteers are coming to me at a nonprofit to get volunteer opportunities. So through all of that, I've truly just been pushed out of my comfort zone, but in all good ways to go beyond anything that many high schoolers get to experience. And all of this has really pushed me to study human development and family sciences at the University of Arkansas next year. So I want to thank my mentors, even they couldn't be here tonight. They actually have a board meeting tonight as well, but their names are Erica Wright and Natalie Mylum, and they've just been so helpful through all of this. They'll give me something to go work on, and they'll come back at the end and say, you know, you did this so well, Heidi, then, you know, this maybe will take a different turn next time, and give me pointers on how to just improve everything that I am helping them with. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. Good job.
Students who participate in this program are recognized through state career-ready diploma seals and other special opportunities, including a program with the Forsyth County Chamber of Commerce's Excellence in Business Awards. These programs showcase, showcase winners of the Internship Innovation Awards from prior years. And perhaps what we are most proud of as a school district, and for me personally as a CTAE student, is the graduation rate of pathway completers. This data was released on November 4th by the Georgia Department of Education. And as we work on marketing and branding of CTAE programs, we wanted to be sure to show you some of the highlights from last week's College and Career Fair. It was an awesome event. Let's take a look. In closing, we thank the Forsyth County Board of Education and Superintendent Bearden for the support they provide so that our students can reinvest in our community. Please be sure to keep up with us on social media and join us as we begin the busy season of CTSO competitions, mock interviews, and preparing for our industry credentialing exams. At this time, I will ask all three of my peers to come back up, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Great job.
It was really nice to hear the specifics of each interview, whether it was mentorships or internships, because we don't often get to hear the details, so I really enjoyed hearing that. What got you all interested at, to begin with? How did you hear about it? How did you first get involved? You know, it was an opportunity.
Okay. All right. So it was actually just posted on our, at our school, just like paper, just wasn't anything crazy, no emails. Like, no, it wasn't even like, like somebody said it to me, it was just actually posting it on the school, and that actually.
It was just as simple as that.
That's how I got it.
For me, I was actually in my business class. It was my third year of the Entrepreneurship Pathway, and a teacher from Work-based Learning came in and talked to us about the benefits of internships. And my friends actually, they dared me because we recently tried to do a pressure washing business, which failed, but it.
It was a learning opportunity, though.
Yeah, but you tried.
Inspired me to go out and really chase a job instead of going for the typical, normal job. It really inspired me to go and find a professional job.
So I'm currently not in either program, but I know a student that currently interns in the CTAE office at my school with Dr. Lowe and all the coordinators, and that's something that appeals to me, and I really want to work in that office next year.
Wow. That's a very bold move on your behalf. I like that. That's good. I bet you'll be there.
But I think it's two very good programs, and I think they truly benefit CTA educations.
Yeah, great.
So I had some friends in the program last year, so they just got me interested in it. And then I knew that I was interested in something nonprofit or foster care type of stuff. And I actually, I go to Central, and SAFT is right by the Coming Fairgrounds, so I pass by almost every day. So I found them online and reached out to them, emailed them, and they're like, yeah, we'd love to have an intern to help us out. Nonprofits don't have a lot of money to, you know, be given, so I get to help them out with a lot of things free on their end, so.
You didn't speak about this, but I know some of our internships are paid. Are your internships paid internships?
I, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, sir, my.
Yours is? Okay.
I started out in the summer, 45 days unpaid, working pretty much full-time, and then I moved on to pay.
Awesome. Great. Is yours?
I'm not.
You're not? Okay. Yeah, and that's not, I'm not surprised with a nonprofit. But I think it's important for our public to see that there are opportunities for our students to intern where they able to make a little bit of money as well.
And where their passion is.
Yeah.
I just want to say one thing. I saw one lady was videoing this, and this will be, all of our meetings are videoed. If you go to our main website, under Board of Education, you can find videos, so you can see exactly how you were presented from this angle instead of from, from behind. So just to let you know.
That was very good.
So one of the things that I listened to was the fact that the, your partners and your mentors actually empowered you to do a lot of things. What was something that you learned by being empowered? Like for the marketing with the YouTube, you know, they empowered you to do that and gave you basically the whole reputation of the company on YouTube. And so what did you learn from that experience, actually being empowered?
Gosh, it's a lot. Every day I go in there and I see how many subscribers we have, and I'm just like, it's just so, like, I'm just so lucky to have the opportunity. And the way it empowers me, it's like, I can keep on going, keep on going, keep on going. And there's so much more just YouTube itself. There's analytics, posting the video, reaching out to, reaching out to consumers. And it's just one way to really get the consumer involved.
For me, when I first came in, I saw my instructors' passion for helping people, and I always thought it's, it's a money game because we're working with wealth and money. But when you think about it, we have the responsibility of over 200 families' livelihood. So when they come in, sometimes we're their therapist, we help them out with family issues. And so it truly puts a, if you have a passion for helping people, which I figured out I did, that really lets you put it through.
That's a great comment.
So on my first day of my mentorship, my mentors gave me a sheet of contacts and said, reach out to all these people and see if you can get some sponsors for our 5K in August.
That's such a job.
They were, you know, they were like, we're just going to throw it out there and see how you do. And then from there, you know, up what we give you or lower what we give you. And I'm pleased to say they've only upped, like, so.
That's great.
You guys should be very proud of yourselves.
And your parents, too.
For me, this is important because Dr. Lowe knows a lot about me and, and this work. Because for me, I got one experience as an 11th grader to help a worldwide artist set up at our big venue downtown and was able to watch that artist set up that stage, come and perform, do his job, and got a real-life experience and realized, I didn't want to do that. And so, you know, having these real-life experiences help you really solidify your direction and what you're going. So now, as you go out to college, you have a real purpose for being there and learning real, real information, real skills that you're going to put to work in these fields. And so to me, this is an important part, and the more students we can get involved in these things, the better, because they're going to solidify their future. And so I'm excited to see what y'all are doing.
Kylie Jenner just sold her company for $600 million, and she's 22, so that social media thing's big.
Yeah, I think this is a good time to point out, we have the shared position coming up with the Chamber of Commerce. That'll happen this spring, and that will really help us increase the number of internship, mentorship opportunities for our students, and also externship opportunities for our teachers as well. And I think it's important that we thank all of our sponsors that are on the screen right now. And, you know, one of the things you guys are doing that you may not realize is you're enabling other students to have opportunities because the four of you are going out into the field, and you're being so professional, and you're representing us so very well, that those companies are more likely to say, we're okay with allowing Forsyth County school students to come work in our business and industry. And I hope you don't lose sight of that because that's so important. Thank you so much for representing us so incredibly well. We're very proud of you.
And tell other companies.
That's right. And then, and the word spreads, you know? If you, if you take on a Forsyth County intern, they're going to do a professional job for you, and that is so important for our reputation and to Valerie and Deborah and all of our Work-based Learning folks. Thank you for all you do for our students every day. I really appreciate it. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Great job, guys. Good job.
We are about to get into the business portion of our meeting, so if anybody would like to exit and go have dinner, it would be a great time, but if you'd like to stay, you're welcome as, as well.
If you want any wealth management advice, you might go to catch them on the way out.
Valerie, great job.
All right, we'll get back to work.
Poor Larry.
All right. Well, we got consent agenda first.
You have a little time, Larry. Okay.
All right. Does everybody have time to read through the consent agenda? And so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So.
Second.
Darla kind of beat you to it almost.
First by Darla, second by Nancy, all in favor. It is unanimous. Public participation, anything tonight? There is nothing. Thank you. So therefore, Larry Hamel, Finance Report.
High bar tonight.
He's going to, he's going to jazz it up tonight. You can just tell.
I will attempt to, at least. There we go. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So tonight, we have October 2019 financial statements, and as always, we're trying to meet Goal 3, to be effective and efficient in the financial planning of the school system. And if I can bring you to the first page for the statement of cash receipts and disbursements for October 31st. We started the month off with $25 million in cash, ended the month with $35 million in cash. We brought receipts in of $53 million, and we had cash disbursements of $42.4. One thing I do want to point out to you is that if you look on the second line in tax and grants, taxes and grants, you'll see that we brought in only $28.2 million in property tax. Last year, in October of 2018, that, that number was $85 million. So what happened was, is last year, there was a large bank that dropped a check in the month of October prior to the deadline of November 15th, and that's why we got so much money in October of last year. I can say, though, that as of November 10th of this year, there's $120 million that's going to be jumped, dropped into the month of November for next month.
We have some bills to pay.
And the taxes weren't due till the 15th, so we got five more day of collections. I talked to Amanda Nash, who's the director over there in Tax Exemisher's Office, and she said that all she's doing is sitting at a desk, stamping envelopes, and as they come in, to make sure they get a date stamp on them, and that's all she's been doing for last week.
Wow.
So there's a lot of checks that have come in, and they're going to be processing them. So we believe we're going to have a lot more money coming in for the next month. So because they got $85 million last year, the fund balance or the cash equivalent last year at this time was about $112 million. You can see there's a big difference. Revenue detail for the month, we've collected $126 million, $126.5, with a collection rate of about 26%. Last year, we had $194 for about $43.49. I think you'll see a big difference in November, though, once we get those numbers in there. On the expenses, we're at $161 million in expenditures year-to-date for a percentage of use of 34.38%. Last year, we were at $149.6 for 34.07, so we're pretty in line with last year's numbers. On our debt service cash analysis, we're at $54.3 million. Last year, we're at $51.5, so the amount of money we're collecting is only getting better as the years go on, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule on that. The investment summary, of course, because we haven't had as much money come in, we didn't have that much money to invest this month, so we're behind. Last year, we had about $215 million in investments. We're only at 115 right now. But last week, Steve and I dropped $116 million into LGIP fund to start drawing interest on. So we put that much money into LGIP. And the reason we did LGIP instead of notes is And the reason we did LGIP instead of notes is the rates have changed so much. What LGIP is a little bit ahead right now of treasury notes. And then our collections through 2019 are eighty-nine point five million dollars. We're on average collection of three point three million. Last year, we were collecting three point two two three, so we're averaging about ninety-four thousand extra a month collection rate, ratio-wise. The collections for the elementary schools, pretty normal compared to last year. There's not much difference as well as middle schools and high schools. And then, right now, we've got eleven point four million dollars sitting at the school bank accounts. Last year, this time, we had about ten point seven, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule. And that's the financial statements for October 2019. Any questions?
And tomorrow, you're spending all day at an economic development seminar and learning all kinds of stuff for us?
Yes, and I'll probably be the only non-legal person there learning.
It looks like a very intensive schedule, so we appreciate you doing that because it's, you're going to be tired at the end of that day.
Yeah, the material I downloaded this morning was a hundred and sixty-eight pages, so that sounds like it's going to be very intensive very quick.
We'll take good notes for us.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have action items, starting with the first approved, your redistricting map with Mr. Joey Perkel.
Good afternoon. The staff met last week and we recommend, we actually have recommended, we have one recommended change for the final district bond map, that I'd like to quickly go over that with you. It's labeled that you can see, I think, move seven. Can, can you all see that?
No, not right now.
I think I have to pull it up on that one.
Sorry about that.
We'll pull it up. All right. Okay, he's got it. That was fast.
There you go. So you can see it's, well, you barely can see it. It's so small. But basically, so to explain the rationale for this, for the staff making this move, it will keep the parcels on the southwest side of Riley Road from the intersection of Nam and Wallace Drive to Oak Grove Circle and Hamby Drive at Silver City Elementary, which again is shown in move seven. This would keep this handful of parcels adjacent to Riley Road, Road consistent with all other parcels on Riley Road in terms of school bus routing. It would still allow the district to fulfill its primary goal of populating Silver City at under a hundred percent student capacity, capacity. Actually, this really only affects two elementary students. But for those reasons that I mentioned, the staff really felt that it was best that we move that area back and line that back up and have that area back, go back to Silver City as opposed to originally where we had them moving to Matt Elementary. Other than that, and other, and the, the information that you all discussed at your meeting last week regarding the DLI students, the staff had no other recommended changes. So at this time, I would ask the superintendent for a recommendation for approval of the final district lines.
I recommend that we approve the district lines as presented. And just to be clear, I recommend that we allow the dual-language immersion students who are currently enrolled at Kelly Mill Elementary to stay and we will provide transportation for those students.
Is there a motion to that effect? Is that moved? Motion by Nancy?
Second.
Second by Tom, all in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you.
I just want to thank Joey and the staff for all of their work on this redistricting process. You know, as always, it's a lot of conversations, a lot of moving parts, but I, they feel like, I feel like we've met the objective. We're going to functionally populate Poole's Mill Elementary and we have kept the capacity over a hundred percent, under a hundred percent at the other schools that were unpacked at, which were our two primary objectives. So I want to thank the staff for all of their work and for your support.
All right, next we have the approving the school district calendar for 2021, 2022.
So hard to say.
So I actually have presented to you, it was presented at your meeting last week, the calendar after we received the feedback. We did not, I did not, and those that reviewed that with me, did not recommend any changes based on the feedback. And I think we talked about that. So at this point in time, this is the student calendar for 21, 22. Next year's calendar has already been approved, so this will be for the year following that. So I'll ask the superintendent for a recommendation for approval of the student calendar.
Recommend approval of the 2021, 2022 student calendar.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Darla, second by Wes. Second by Wes, all in favor. That is unanimous. And last, we have established 2020 board meeting dates. Who's, is that?
That can be you.
That can be me. All right. Has everybody had a chance? I did look all those up and didn't see anything.
We've kept, kept it the same, same night, consistent, you know. A few years back, before Wes was on the board, we were meeting on Thursdays, but we changed that to Tuesday a couple of years ago and that's worked fine for staff. Seems to work well for board members, so it's very similar to what we have done the last couple of years. So I would recommend approval of the 2020 board meeting dates.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy, all in favor. That is unanimous. Points of affirmation, Dr. Bearden?
I don't have anything tonight.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Darla, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.